Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent player, a moment of reflection.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Leisure on January 7th, 2022, and posted on the Volton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to items to be presented. First up, we have a presentation by Asbury Partners for accessory tent and shed to be added to the Asbury Hotel at 210 Fifth Avenue, Block 4104, Lot 13.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Porter. I'm attending with Lisa Shing and Angela Masi and Henry Knight on behalf of the applicant. This is a presentation, a re-presentation, really just to give you an overview of the current application, which is at the Asbury Hotel for two accessory structures, one being a tent and the other one being a square shed. So just first, to give you a brief overview in terms of the tent structure, essentially under the designated ordinance for Asbury Park, there's a requirement that for temporary structures, that there's a limit that they be erected approximately up to, but no more than four times per year. So in light of that specific requirement, I started seeking relief under the zoning code, and I did a wonderful redevelopment plan to allow the ability to utilize the tent structure throughout the year for a variety of events, which is in keeping with what they're currently doing and have been doing at the property since 2016. The goal is to allow them to continue to have this event space function and serve all the individuals coming to the hotel throughout the year as opposed to being used for seasonal purposes only. And there is, you know, it's a demand for this tent space. What they value is that in connection with various art shows and other events, while certainly for weddings, all throughout the year, that having the ability to have the tent, particularly during the summer season, up throughout that season, and then on an absentee basis during the remainder of the year, would provide a greater flexibility to serve the customers of the hotel. In terms of the actual tent itself, we provide those part of the packet, and I'm not going to go through all the specific details. We do have a representative from the tent package here. Do they expect the council has any questions? But basically, the tent structure itself is, consists of fabric, it's approximately 30 by 30. We provide a plan set show that it can be positioned in one of any number of positions, but remains within the tank area, denoted at the rear of the existing hotel. And then the second aspect to the application is a storage structure. It's an approximately 480 square foot storage structure. Essentially, the purpose of that would be to allow the existing outdoor event items to be stored as opposed to being in storage boxes outside the site to be located within a storage shed. Under the existing code, again, you're dealing with a structure that's less than the property square feet, so originally that's what I applied for a zoning permit. But because of the fact that we're within a waterfront development area and there is an existing site plan for the site, we wrapped this into the tent application so that we could seek approval from the council and then eventually go for the planning board to allow these as accessory uses to the existing permitted use under the waterfront redevelopment plan for the hotel. The uses are not specifically called out under the waterfront redevelopment plan, but they are customary in general, much like other uses, which are already at the hotel including swimming pools and various other accessory structures. In terms of the event tent, it will be located in the outdoor patio area. There's no additional increase with respect to the erection of that tent regarding impervious coverage. So the only coverage we have to decide with intention is that small structure. In terms of lighting, the only lighting that will be proposed is the existing lighting that remains on the hotel and then lighting inside the structure to the extent that it's needed for individuals using it. Otherwise, with respect to landscaping for the accessory structure, the only landscaping proposed is per the recommendation of TRC, which was to add a hedgerow to the east of the storage structure. So that, in essence, sums up the approvals. Again, it's simply to allow for the utilization of the tent throughout the year for a variety of events. Again, including with exactly what's going on at the site now. And then with respect to storage structures, to allow for the utilization and avoidance of using essentially storage pods and instead build with a building which will be designed to match the brick exterior of the hotel.
And is there a picture of that? I see a picture of the tent, but I don't see a rendering of the storage unit.
It is, that's what I'm holding up, right there.
Okay.
Will be a simple brick building. And the brick will be as close in color as possible to the existing brick of the hotel.
And just describe to me again where the, I get, I understand the tent. Just describe to me where this storage unit will be.
Sure, sure. So here, let me put it. That would be right here, the orange. It will be, so here's the tent. The storage structure will be right here towards Kingsley Street. Here you have Fifth and Fourth. And it's behind the existing hotel in front of the parking facilities along Kingsley.
So if we were looking at this.
It's in an existing grass area on the site.
So do you see it from the street?
So it's near Asbury Lane. Is that a better way to describe it?
Yes.
So it's actually, so it's just that Danny Punch?
No, it's Danny Punch's space right here.
Right.
And then just to the left, it's actually just a grass area that heads back to the outdoor event space. And so on that grass area.
It's got like a little bench there now, a memorial bench?
No, it's inside the bench. So the bench in the little memorial area to, to Brian.
I know, I know.
That's Brian Hall, and that remains. And then, but there's just a patch of sod there now. And so most people would walk right by going to see it. And so it'll be set back from the street. We'll put a printed hedge in front of it, so you won't see it that much. It's 12 feet wide by 40 feet deep. The brick will match, no lights on it. It's just two metal doors, so we can put, you know, furniture, sofas, tables, chairs in there. When we brought Danny Punch from New York to the gallery space, he needed the extra 500 square feet. So right now, we have extra stuff in pods, like temporary pods in the parking lot. It's just like unsightly, it's not a long-term solution. And we're trying to get it done in the off-season, so we work, you know, try not to be disruptive, but that's really, that's what it's for.
Right. To the question regarding Kingsley Street, as Mr. Trump indicated, there's going to be a hedgerow installed all along the east side of the storage structure so as to prevent any visibility.
And since this is brick, and it's gone from grass to slab foundation, are you still underneath your maximum impervious numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then the tent question, you don't know. Since it's year-round now, is that something we increase the rate of approval?
No.
Why? It's a year-round structure, it's being used to generate money.
So I have, the tents really considered personal property and not real estate. So it's not, and I spoke with our assessor, and I'll speak with Eric, and their determination is that the tent is a personal property, not real estate. So while there perhaps we'll be able to increase the revenue by renting this out for weddings or whatnot, it would be the same if they put more expensive furniture in their rooms and raise the rate on their rooms. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that the, that there's a test that identifies whether it's real or personal property, and this would be considered personal property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a little point of clarification, it's not full year round, and we'll come up and go down. So it's not going to be out like full year. We just, we need it more than 14 times. That's, that's the issue. The order is made a lot of the 14 times, and, you know, we pay it up and down. If there are no weddings or events for several weeks, the tent comes back down and there'll be nothing there for a period of weeks, but it's not, it's not meant to be permanent.
Okay, thank you.
But it's sustainable during weather?
Yes. So for example, during the winter months, if there wouldn't be snow event, the tent would come down, and it's subject to inspections by the construction officials, so we would follow the same protocols that have been done in the past. There are different tents depending upon the season, based on the elements, to allow for winds and other factors.
So you switch out these tents?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we've been using the tents without incident. So without incident, we're using these, but the change in the city ordinance is what brings us here today. So it's just something that, you know, we're not in compliance with the city ordinance because we golf and out too much, so we're here today to ask for some relief. So the hotel can keep it open year-round and have a little bit more flexibility in these developments.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think just before we finish up, council did one on the record that it would be abiding by all actual codes and permits. It was a 5,000,000, right?
Absolutely.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation by Inspire by Somerset of Development Project at 1201 Ocean Avenue, 105th Avenue, and 115 Fourth Avenue, Block 4105, Lots 1, 3, and 4.
Michael Burnell, Geared Out of Hallards, Cecil here, I'm the advocate this evening. We're excited to be here to present this concept for 1209 Ocean Avenue. It is for preliminary and final site tent subdivision. We have a building design we've met with the TRC committee a couple of times. We think it's effectively complying with your redevelopment plan, and we're excited to present this to you this evening. The applicant is inspired by Somerset. They created an entity, Somerset Asbury Park, or renewal, LLC, that will be the developer, if you point that as a subsequent developer. So we're excited to get moving. I'd like to introduce Dave Minow, who's going to give you a presentation of the plans and the building.
Thank you, Michael. I'm David Minow with Minow in Moscow, architects and planners. And we're really proud to present this preliminary plan for 1209 Ocean Avenue. Just to locate people before I get into the presentation, our site is outlined in red on the left there, and it's ordered by Ocean Avenue to the east, Fourth Avenue to the south, Fifth Avenue to the north, and Kingsley Street to the west. And this north, this is obviously Bradley Park, which will always remain a park, Atlantic Square Park just to the west of that. We overlook, our site will overlook the Iron Whale site, so that will orient you on the boardwalk, and real close, catacornered from the convention hall. Part of our, a block out of our site at the corner is the Wonder Bar, and our design work was really to enhance and embrace and preserve the Wonder Bar. That was a lot of our thinking in how we designed this building and how we looked at the streetscape, and I think you'll see a few new moves that we've made in the design that really honor the Wonder Bar and keep it in place. Other major projects in the area, obviously, the Asbury Club, Ocean Club to the, just to the south, the Asbury Hotel to the west, Berkeley Carteret, and then the North Beach Corner, many of those are major projects in the immediate vicinity. But here's the look of our project from the, looking from the southeast, and you can see just in the distance, and I'll show you other renderings, you have a little bit clearer view of the Wonder Bar on the very right side of this picture, but our design approach to this building was to activate the street. And the redevelopment plan doesn't always naturally do that, but we took it on as a design goal. And what I mean by activate the street is that on all four sides of this building, at the sidewalk, we have active uses. We have commercial uses, restaurant uses, residential porches and stoops, and that includes going all the way around the back of the site or away from the beach side on Kingsley Street and along the two avenues. And that's important because some of the other projects in the redevelopment, waterfront redevelopment area have brought the parking at the ground level to the street, and that sort of creates a bit of a blank wall. So this is a great experience for people who even live west of the, of this new project, who will be walking toward the beach. They'll have an active street zone to use. And then you see here on the front, we've created an area for cafe dining and a tie-in to the Wonder Bar space. Our architecture is contemporary, and it's in keeping with the, all of the architecture in the immediate areas. You can see on the left, the actual built Asbury Club, and then on the foreground here, the Iron Whale Building is a rather contemporary building. And we've found that people are really looking for this maximization of glass, we have sun shades facing the beach, and we've used the materials and designed the materials in a contemporary way, that it fits into the fabric that exists in this immediate location. This particular slide shows the Wonder Bar on the foreground, the sand yard on the side that can be used for the happy hour, and how our restaurant space, which is immediately adjacent to that, has a synergy and a tie-in to the Wonder Bar space. Moving up to the rooftop, which is on the fourth level of the building, we have our outdoor deck area, pool area, and this area has basically a 12-month function. It's not just a summertime outdoor deck. We have things out there that could be used in the, even in the fall and spring months. Those are things like fire pits and outdoor seating areas, grilling areas, we have an outdoor movie area, and our gym, which is a glass-in space, and club room, which is adjacent to the pool, move right out to that outdoor deck area. So we, we think that this fourth floor overlook over the ocean will be used quite frequently. Very briefly, I don't want to get into a lot of floor plan issues, but I think there's some significant big ideas in our floor plan, and I want to go back to that idea of activating the streets. If you look at this plan, and Ocean Avenue was on the right, the Iron Whale Building's here on the right side, so the two blue spots are retail and restaurant areas along Ocean Avenue. And I don't know whether you can see it on the slide, but the portion of the building that's closest to Wonder Bar actually angles back a little bit from the street, and you'll see in one of the renderings, I'm going to show you, a street view. As you look north on Ocean Avenue, you'll see the Tilly sign pretty clearly, and we've made that adjustment to our building to really highlight the history of the Tilly sign on Wonder Bar. So if you look around the building, the purple areas are our main lobbies on Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue, but we have this other axis that runs east-west, and we call that Sand Alley. That's, that's a space within the building where people who live there can move from the beach into their building, and there's a place there to store beach chairs and umbrellas, there's a place to wash off sand, and it really creates, I think, something that is very unique in this area, but in all the projects I've seen along the New Jersey coast, doesn't have this type of informal beach-oriented function within the building. Our more formal lobbies are on the north and south sides. As you continue around the building, you see the beige covered spaces. Those are actual dwelling units on the ground floor. They have a little raised stoop to get up to them. So that puts eyes on the street. That puts glass on the street. That puts activation on the street around the three other sides of our building. And then the gray areas in the very back along Kingsley, that's the entry to our garage, a ramp going up to our embedded garage, and the other gray area is a storage, is a delivery area, trash, move-ins, those types of pack of house functions. So those are very discreet, discreet areas along Kingsley. But here's a rendering from street view, looking north. You see the Berkeley Carteret in the far background and the Wonder Bar, and how you can see the Tilly sign as this building is tilted back along that frontage. This is another view, more at street level, showing the fenced-in area there for the happy hour. That'll remain as part of the fabric of Asbury Park. And then our cafe dining along the street front. So we've got an extra wide sidewalk. We've set our building back further than the property lawn to create activity along that frontage. Moving up in the building, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but this shows the embedded, a typical parking level, three-level parking with the ramp coming down to Kingsley. And then we have units that move around that area. And then we come to the fourth level, and this shows the plan of our fourth-level amenity deck with a grand lawn in the center, pool area, areas to eat outside, a grilling station. People can't grill on their balconies, it's not a permitted use, so they need a place to do that. We've provided that. And then as the building moves toward Kingsley and the interior units, we have very large private terraces off of the units that are interior that don't have necessarily the beach views on the outside of the building. This is a view looking out toward the ocean through that courtyard, and you can see the lovely spaces. These are private terraces here on the, on the far right, and then the more public and common area in the center of the space. And then moving up in the building, this would be the typical upper floors as they go up. We've created a view corridor from the Asbury Hotel, and we've looked very carefully at those views because there's actually a bay on the back of the hotel that can see right through this to the beach. And we've stepped our building back on the north side near Fifth Avenue, away from the Wonder Bar to help that function with your service area in that location. And then moving on up to the upper level, this is more the upper-level plan that has a mezzanine, and, and on the top of the roof deck, there's some private balconies for those mezzanine units that are accessed through the stairway that goes up to the mezzanine space. So this is a view internal to a unit, looking out to the ocean on one of the top-floor units, and on the top there, you can sort of see the ceiling of the mezzanine and the views through to the ocean. So we're very excited to present this project to you. As Michael told you in the beginning, we feel like we're compliant with the waterfront redevelopment plan, and we're excited to get into the planning board and move ahead with the projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other particular details you'd like to hear from us about, advocate? Is there any, anything else?
I do, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you, I don't remember, they get Michael Sullivan's report or memo? Yes. Okay. So I'm looking at Michael Sullivan's memo. Yes. Which I will tell you was a bit of a word salad for me, but I'm not understanding his interpretation of height, and I don't know if that's because I'm not on the planning board, or that this document is a word salad, and so maybe you guys can break down what he's talking about in terms of height?
Sure, I'm happy to. I can tell you, we did spend, we've been at this for quite a bit now. We did spend a lot of time with your TRC and Mr. Sullivan talking about the height. In fact, we modified these plans based on this concern that we might need a height relief, and we didn't want it received with any height barriers. So that's the resulting, the plan you're looking at is a result of all of that. But let's see if we can explain this without the word salad.
Yeah.
Because it's a word salad to us too, so we're happy to try.
And I think bottom line of the memos, I think now Michael Sullivan agrees with where we are with the building in terms of building height. But basically, we, we have a, we have an eight-story building here, eight residential stories with a mezzanine, permitted under the waterfront redevelopment plan. And then our parking is three levels embedded inside the building, which is also a compliant part of the redevelopment plan. In fact, redevelopment plan has diagrams that show the design of these buildings in these blocks to be designed out of that. He's now in full agreement, I believe, with the plans that we have currently before you.
And would that be after I got this memo, Don?
No. This is, this is Michael Sullivan, the TRC met twice and worked out the agreement, got the better word, and that's what's in your, your TRC memo.
So I'm still, I'm still going to need you to explain, so I guess, what would normally be eight, eight, how many feet are in eight stories normally?
I don't think there is a norm in, in projects like this because the first floors have varying heights to them and.
What is your first floor height?
We have going along the entire first floor, you can sort of see it come to this level, we have about a 22-foot ceiling going all around, and that includes the actual dwelling units that are on the first floor.
Okay. So that's the one I read?
So it's, it's two. There's a supplemental, that was the first one, and then the most recent one is this, and that probably is the, you can have mine.
Okay.
So let me see if I can.
So you're saying 22 feet on the first story, on the first stories?
Yes.
Okay.
That's pretty typical of any kind of downtown project, and that, what that does is that creates a really rentable space for the retail and restaurant spaces. They need that kind of height to survive, so, and that's acknowledged. I mean, the redevelopment plan and.
But are the dwelling units 20?
They are.
The dwelling units, not the retail?
The dwelling units going around on Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue and Kingsley are high-ceilinged as well.
Okay. So not those units, but the other ones, what are those feet?
The ceiling heights in the other units are about nine feet.
Okay.
Now, the mess, the upper level's a different story, we have tall ceilings there.
And why is, why are some of them 22 feet and some of them nine feet?
Again, to create that base of a building from an urban design standpoint. I think the redevelopment plan talks about creating a base, a middle, and a top of a building, and we've done that, and the redevelopment plan acknowledges that in the detail of the architectural portion of the redevelopment plan. So we're keeping this consistent base around the entire building. If you go around the entire block, it'll have that, this, this height is apparent moving around the building.
I think as a practical matter, it's to try to capture magnificent retail space with the high ceiling so it could be successful.
But you're saying the dwelling units are that high too?
Well, because you have to keep, you have to keep the same.
They're, they're not quite that high because the difference is the retail entrance obviously is created in the street, but the units that are on the ground floor have a small flight of steps going up to a porch to enter the building. And one of the reasons we do that is people don't feel comfortable by ground floor unit where they're sleeping, having, you know, pedestrians walking right by their bedroom window. So that floor is raised up, so the height, the actual floor-to-ceiling height in those units might be in the 15-foot range due to the fact we've taken some of that height off the ground level. So we have a little stoop coming up from the street level, front porch, I think you enter the building, so the front porch is at the level of the floor of the unit.
And I, let me see if I can help a little bit with this. Same reaction when I read the memo also. So I think the little bit of confusion comes from your redevelopment plan itself, which requires varying heights, varying numbers of stories. You're only privative to have so many stories depending upon where on the street the building's located. So we go.
And does it define feet in those stories?
No.
Okay.
There's no. So we go from three stories to eight stories depending upon where, where the building is, and because your redevelopment, redevelopment plan is not precise as to where those particular break-off points are, we've tried to comply with how he interpreted. Mr. Sullivan's indicated that the planning board would need to confirm, and if it doesn't comply from their perspective, they would need to grant the weight of relief from, from that requirement. So that's, I think, in a nutshell, what he's saying in that memo.
Yeah, I don't know what he's saying in that memo, but I'm going to repeat this back to you, and you tell me if I have it right.
Okay.
That there are certain units that are 22 feet, 22 feet.
15 feet, I said, because you raise up the stoop on the ground floor units.
That are 15 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And then there are certain units that are nine feet.
Correct.
Okay. And then Michael Sullivan, in his report, mentions. And then Michael Sullivan, in his report, mentions us, I guess, to be honest, I don't know, because I had a real difficulty with the report a little bit. He mentions this idea that we would be setting a precedent on 15 feet being a story, if I'm reading this report right.
Yeah, I don't think his concern was that. I think his concern was a possible precedent about, we have the parking in the interior, right? Somebody can interpret it, because you don't have feet, you have stories, that you could put level, eight levels over the parking. And we had a long conversation about how that couldn't be done, because it's a practical matter, you're limited to how many levels of parking you can have. Do we have anything that can demonstrate that concept, that we can look at as we talk about this, that would be helpful? Where the interior of the parking is?
Well, I don't know the plans.
So that was the concern, that somebody could game the system, if you will.
Oh, 100%.
Right. But it's really not possible.
So the concern to me is that we get a whole bunch of development that they're calling eight stories that are between 15 and 20 feet.
We're not getting any more units. We're just creating a beautiful building.
No, but it affects the height, right? So it affects the height.
The height is affected in stories, so we meet the height requirement in stories.
Right, but I think what Michael Sullivan's report alludes to is that other people could use your 15 or 20 feet and have eight of those, and call that eight stories, when in reality, let me ask you this, from ground to top, how many feet is it?
I don't have the exact height yet, because we haven't done the construction drawings.
Look, I'm not, I'm not trying, well, and I'm not trying, I'm trying to make sense of a report that I got that I'm struggling with, and I'm not on the planning board. This is not my area of expertise. I'm baffled by height and stories. I'm not understanding height, stories, and feet. I don't have a clear understanding of what that means.
Let's keep trying, because we've spent a lot of time with Michael on this, so we're not doing a good job explaining it. So I'm going to have to do Ralph, because he's a big part of all these conversations.
The council has this in their packet. I guess you have a different presentation that you gave us?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was.
But do you have that? The council has that.
I don't think he was worried about the feet. I think he was worried about stories on top of the parking that could get you.
That's what it was.
Eight on top of the parking.
Explain that again.
Okay, I'm going to let Ralph.
I'm impatient. Thank you very much. Ralph Sucker, I'm the developer with the commission. Yeah? You're sworn in?
No.
Yeah.
So when this original plan, when the redevelopment plan was adapted, I was actually in the audience when I guess Devani and DPC were proposing it, we did a lot of work with them, they specifically did not call out feet, not the stories, to create better buildings. When you give feet, you limit creativity, you end up, for example, with retail, they might have a 10-foot ceiling or an 8-foot ceiling, because developers want to give some space to the residential. They specifically.
Well, I'm just going to push back on that for a second, and just say, you do cap height when you define it by feet.
But they didn't. They defined it specifically, not by feet, but by stories.
Right.
That was their intent, by design.
Okay.
By design, done by stories, not by height. Michael's concern was that somebody could game the system, because if you go ahead and you say, okay, I'm going to put eight stories over here, and let's say each story's 30 feet tall, right? And behind that, behind that, you put in three stories. So you take that 30-foot space, and you say, I'm measuring it over here, but I'm not going to measure it over there. So it's eight stories, but it's hiding doubly about 16 stories, tripling it out. I'm not so good at math, so I'm going to be tripling it. But that's, that was his concern. And that led us to do two things. One thing, originally, those whole residential units, the first floor units that wrapped the building of Ford and Kingsley, and on the fifth, actually had a sort of loft layer in them that we removed at his request, so as not to set a precedent. And there was concern as to what that was called, a loft, a mezzanine. We didn't want to have to come in and ask for variances, so we removed that. That's why those ceiling heights, really, that could have been, as you said, that could have added to another story. He liked the plan, but he was concerned that it would become a precedent. So we removed that at the request. That was the first thing we did. The other issue is, and I wish we had this on the screen, but you do have it, I believe, in the packet, and you can see over here, a concern that he had, that if you go ahead and you start counting all the different levels, depending on where you count, you get a number of eight or nine levels. What we clarified, and he wants to clarify.
What's the difference between a level and a story?
So let me explain. His concern was the parking. In other words, if we would have built five stories of parking, and then go on top of that and put eight stories of residential, you could end up with a much taller building. What we did was, by design, so that we could activate the street, we brought our parking internal. We brought the parking and we wrapped it. So unlike some other developments where you'll see, where the parking garage, you see a street wall that's just blank, all you're seeing is glass or stone or brick, because the garage is coming all the way up to the sidewalk. We brought it internally, and it's literally three levels of parking. So he wanted to make sure that someone doesn't say, I can do parking and residential. That's why he called it out and said, let's make sure that this doesn't become a precedent. And by articulating it, he wanted to make sure that somebody can't go and game the system. If you ask him, and I encourage you to ask him, you will hear from him that he's very satisfied with our design. Actually, in the beginning of his report, he calls it out, and he gives it accolades for being creative and solving a lot of problems. We went to great pains to go ahead and create something that we felt would be accretive to the street and Asbury Park, and not just to the people that live there. So that created some conversations. We removed the mezzanine, that loft level from those street-level apartments at his request, and we clarified this issue of how you count your stories. And I think that's the salad. And I hope that helps. Yeah.
Got that?
That's what it is. Can I ask you if you've incorporated any green building initiatives into this project?
Again, we'll be presenting that at the planning board. We're going to do a sustainable building here, and we just have, at this point, we haven't, we're sort of at the starting line of doing concepts to get to this point, to see the developer name, a free developer, and to get the project to the planning board, what we will be doing. And that's in the redevelopment plan, I believe. There is some sustainability measures there, and we intend to meet that.
Okay. Can you just, not tonight, just get me floor-to-top feet, get that to, is it? Is Michelle on this project? Michelle.
I'm sorry?
Can you just get me the feet, the height of the entire building in feet?
We will.
Great.
We'll get that one.
Thank you.
So I'm confused a little bit, which is normal. You want us to pass it with the redevelopment agency, and you want us to pass it to planning board, but you're not answering specific questions about green. So if you, you got to give us more than, like, well, we're going to give that to a planning board, else we may not pass it on to planning board. So that's number one. Number two, where's your staging area going to be? And if you start it on January 1, whatever, what would the build-out of this project be? How long, how many months?
Let me answer the first one, which is, we have a general agreement. So our plan is to fully comply with what you guys require.
And hopefully more.
And hopefully, well, exceed the level of buildings. So the intention would be to exceed, I'm sure. So that's number one. And those plans are being finalized for submission to your planning board.
Right.
So they'll have a right to approve or deny that. The second question was.
Staging.
Staging.
Yeah.
So what is the plan? Do we have that?
We got it. We got it. Not far with it.
So that would be something we would work with the city on, as to how to best do that to, you know, limit to the extent you can, destruction in this area as this building's being constructed. We work closely with the city on that.
Okay, and third question, how long to build?
I think start to finish, from actual start of construction, about 24 months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You bells? Questions? I know you've heard it three times.
Yeah, our questions were answered.
Okay.
So Mayor, we are anxious to move forward as expeditiously as possible. We're under pressure to get this moving, and we have time constraints. So, you know, anything that you need to take the next step, where you actually designate us, and redevelopment agreement can be finalized, we greatly appreciate those efforts.
Okay. The first thing is, if you don't get Quinn the height, you go nowhere.
Well, we're going to get that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
So very quickly, on November 11th, for Veterans Day, we'll be having a Veterans We'll be honoring our veterans at 11 o'clock at Veterans Park on Fifth Avenue.
Nope, it's moved in here.
Never mind, I take all that back. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, we'll be honoring our veterans here in City Hall chambers, council chambers.
It's raining.
Because it's going to rain.
Uh, Councilmember Clayton.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Thank you.
Mayor Moore.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Matters from City Manager.
Nothing at this time, Mr.
Thanks. Matters from the City Attorney.
Aye.
Thanks, Brad. We're now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
Anybody like to be heard? If not, motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
We are now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes of October 26, and the regular meeting minutes of October 26, 2022. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. Discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, and said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2022-442 through 2022-447. Do you have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2022-448, a resolution improvement payment of bills, and PO number 22-02861 will be removed from the agenda.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
This is quite a night.
She's going out last.
Resolution 2022-449, a resolution awarding a contract to J.C. Contracting for trenching and running conduit needed for the new digital sign.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-450, a resolution authorizing door repairs needed at the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-451, a resolution authorizing emergency generator repairs needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-452, a resolution authorizing emergency generator rental needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.[1679.73]